I'm going to be taking us C S two oh four assembly programming. I'm going to continue from where the last tutorial stopped. So I'm taking the study section two, where you have the unit three. So I'll be taking the following contents. Taking us constant up runs and instruction up runs. I'll be taking the basic instructions, branching and looping, procedures and string manipulations. Before the next tutorial takes over. So we are going to be starting with constant up runs and instruction up runs. But before we go to constant up runs and instruction up runs, there are some things we should know. Know we are familiar with assembly language. And we know that there are two broad categories of programming that we have. We have the low level programming language, we have the high level programming language. And we know that under the low level programming language, we have the machine language and we have the assembly language. So assembly programming is a type of low level programming language. And it involves writing instructions in assembly language. And it is closely related to machine code. And we also know that for assembly language, assembly language makes use of mnemonics. What do we mean by mnemonics? Mnemonics are combination of letters, characters and digits. So assembly language makes use of what we call mnemonics for its operation. And that's why we say it serves as a more human readable fashion of machine code. Which uses mnemonics for its operations and symbolic names for memory addresses. So then, for assembly lang- assembly programming, it involves both up code and up runs. In assembly programming, we have both up codes and we have up runs. So we are going to be taking them one by one. Now let's go to up code. What do we mean by up code? Up codes are operation codes, that is the short form. So we call it operation code. Operation code is the instruction that is executed by the CPU. That is the instruction that is executed by the CPU. And it is that up code that will tell the processor the operation that it should perform. Tells you the processor, the operation that it's supposed to perform. Then the up codes are followed by what we call an arguments. Or we say parameters. They are followed by an argument. Or we say parameter that would instruct the processor what to do. So as we move on, we get to understand what these up codes are. Now let's go to up runs. Up runs. Up runs. Said, assembly programming involves up code and up runs. And we have talked about up codes. Now to up runs. What are up runs? Up runs are the arguments or parameters that directly follow a mnemonic. They are the arguments or the parameters that directly follow a mnemonic. Don't forget, when we're talking about up codes, we said up codes are followed by an argument. That would instruct the processor what to do. Hmm? So these arguments or parameters are the up runs. They are the up runs that directly follow a mnemonic. And we can also say the up run is the data or the memory location that is used to execute that instruction. And the memory location that is used to execute that instruction. An example is what we have here. We have M O V A X B X. The up- up runs here are the A X and the B X. They are the up runs. They are the what? They are the up runs. They are the parameters that is directly followed by a mnemonic. This M O V is a mnemonic. It means move. So you are moving the content of this B X into A X. That's what we are doing. Move the content of B X into A X. The A X B X can be a memory address or a register address. Know the other tutor would have told us what register is, memory address is. You would have heard of this. So A X and B X are the up runs. In that example. And they are the one, they are the location that, they are that, they are the data that is used to execute that instruction move. Did you get that? That the data that is used to execute that instruction, or we say is the memory location that is used to execute that instruction move. Now, let's talk about the characteristics of up runs. What are the characteristics of up runs? Up runs may contain register name, data or labels. Then if you have more than one up run, they must be separated by, with a comma like we have in that last example. Move A X comma B X. Then data must be encoded as decimal, binary, octal, hexadecimal or ASCII. ASCII is a, is an acronym. And it means American Standard Code for Information Interchange. It's an acronym that means American Standard Code for Information Interchange. What does this mean? It's a character encoding standard. What it does is that it assigns numeric values to letters, number, punctuation marks and other characters in computer. As we move on in this course, we would get to understand, we still have time to deal with all this encoding. So I want you to take note of that. So now let's go on to up runs arithmetic operation table. This is an up run arithmetic operation table. And we have various operations, the addition, the subtraction, the multiplication, division. We have not and operation, or operation, X or operation. We have the mode. The add, like we have in the example label plus two. It is pointing to the address label plus two bytes. That's what that means. Then let's just move on to the last one. We have mode, mode, M O D there means modulus. Like we have in maths. You know when you have mode of something, that means when you divide the two numbers. If for instance, if you have nine mode eight. If you divide nine divided by eight, the result will be the remain ba- remainder that has been, that is given. Hmm? Like we can have one. If nine, if you have nine mode two, the answer will be one because that will be the remainder. Do you get that? So cow mode eight means cow is divided by eight and the remainder of the result is generated which is one. So that's the up runs arithmetic operation table. Now let's go to computer instructions. Computer instructions. When we say instructions, instructions are, instruction comprise both the mnemonic and any up run. It's comprised of both the mnemonic and any up run like we have in that example. M O V A S comma B X. That's an instruction which has the mnemonic, M O V and the up run, A X. Then because it's two, it's separated by a colon, A X comma B X. So that is an instruction. Instructions are the executable lines of code in the text section of your code. They are the executable lines of code. You know, it's not all that you have in your lines of code that is executed, but I hope you know that. But the instructions are the executable lines of code in the text section of your code. Like you can have comments as part of the lines of your code, but that is not, is not going to execute that. It's just a comment. So instructions are the executable lines of code in the text section of your code. In computer instructions, they are the set of machine instructions that a particular process understands and executes. And the sets of, they are the, part two, sets of machine instruction, language instructions that a particular process understands and then executes. That is computer instruction. And I know that we, we, we know by now that a computer will only perform a task based on the instructions that you have passed to it. Instruction that it has been provided with. That is when it will perform a particular task that has been assigned to it. Then we have an instruction comprise group call fields. In an instruction, for an instruction, we have a group called field. And these fields for the instruction include, we have the operation code, we have the address field and we have the mode field. What do we mean by this? We have the operation code. The operation code will tell us the operation to be performed. Like we are still, let's still use that example, M O V A S comma B X. The operation there is M O V up code, the operation code. So it will tell us, it will specify the operation that is supposed to be performed. That is the operation code. Then the address field, which contains the location of the up run. The address field contains the location of the up run. It can be the, like I said earlier, it can be the register address or the memory address. Know you would have done, talked about register address and the memory address. Then we have the third thing we have in the field is the mode field. The mode field will tell us how the up run will be located. That is the mode field. It will specify how the up run will be located. So for an instruction, we have three fields. We have the operation code, we have the address field and we have the mode field. Now let's go on to basic instruction. We now know what instruction is. We know that instruction are the executable lines of code in the text section of our code. So the, now, let's now talk about basic instruction. Basic instruction. We know that every line in assembly language program direct the assembler to do some form of simple action. It is telling the assembler, it will tell the assembler rather, to do some form of simple action. And we know what assembler is by now. We know that assembler is a software program that would have to convert the assembly program that we have written to a machine language. And why is it converting it? It's to convert it because that is the only language the computer understands. Machine language is the language the computer understands, which is zeros and ones. So it will have to be converted back to machine language. And the software that will do that is the assembler. So every line in an assembly language program direct the assembler to do some form of simple action. And I say, most of these lines define instructions to be post, that will be processed by the CPU. Most of the lines in the assembly language program will define instructions that need to be processed by the CPU. Then I want, I don't, I want us to take note. We have, we've mentioned it before that assembly language instructions represent symbolic code. Symbolic code. It represents symbolic code. The assembly language like other computer language consists of instructional statements. That will tell the CPU the operations it's supposed to perform. To tell the CPU the instruction it's supposed to perform. An example of the, an instruction in assembly languages, when you have M O V A S comma B X. Like I've mentioned. And I've told us that the mnemonic in that example is the M O V. And the up runs are the A X and B X. And the A X and B X. In assembly language, we have three types of statements in assembly language. We have the assembler directives, we have the instructions and we have the comments. We have the assembler directives, we have the instruction and we have the comments. What do we mean by assembler directives? Assembly directives are interpreted by the assembler at build time. At that time when it is trying to execute that lines of code. So they are interpreted by the assembler, that software program that converts it back to machine language. This is the assembler. So the assembly direct, assembler directives are interpreted by the assembler at build time. And are commonly used for, and are used for defining program constants. They are work as, that they are being used for defining program constants. And assembly instructions are divided into two fields. We have the operation, we have the up run field. We know this by now, I've explained that. Then the up run field, also we have the up runs and we have the assembler directive arguments. For the up run field, we have the up run itself and the assembler directive arguments. As you move on in the course of this course, we would understand this better. The operation field, like I've mentioned earlier on, it's, it consists of the mnemonic, mnemonic names. Which is the target machine instruction, which you tell us is particular instruction that is supposed to be carried out. Then we have the comment field. The comment field is optional, like we have in all, where other programming languages, you can have a comment. So for this, the comment field is optional, it is not composite. It's only allow the programmer to document their codes. It will tell us, okay, what is this part of this code? What is it doing? That is what the comment field is. The comment field is not executable, is not part of the executable lines of code, is not executable. They are not executing that, anything in that. So they are being ignored by the assembler. They are being ignored by the assembler. And for assembly language, the comment field is being, it's, it begins with asterisk. Unlike, for instance, in Java now, where you have comment, it begins with double slash, backslash. Then for assembly language, when you see it, when you see asterisk beginning a line of code. It means that part is the what? Is the comment. So it begins with asterisk or semicolon. That is for comments. Then we can also have label. You can also have label, the label field. And what the label field will do is that it will allow the programmer to use symbols for memory locations. It will allow the programmer to use, to make use of symbols for its memory locations. And the importance of this is that it makes program easier to read and write when you have labels. It makes, it, it makes the programs easily, you can easily read and write. So that is the importance of the label field. That's the importance of the label field. And now for the instruction, each instruction follow this structure. We have the label, we have the up code, up run, then we have the comments. So that is the structure that the instruction follow in assembly lang- in assembly language. I've told us what the up code field contains. That is the part that has the mnemonic. Then the up run field have told us that also it contains the arguments that is required for the machine instruction. Talked about that, then we've talked about the comments, what the comments be. So this is the structure for a, for an instruction in assembly language. So now let's move on. There are different classes of instruction. We have different classes of instruction. Like in assembly language, we have about twenty instruction classes. We have about twenty instruction classes. Therefore, our level will be talking about ten of them. And basically, actually, this twenty, this ten rather, this thing that we are going to talk about now are from the twenty instruction classes. In the twenty instruction classes, we have, seven of these instruction classes have two up runs. They have two up runs. And eight have a single up run. While five have no up runs at all, they have two up runs at all. Let me just run through the twenty instructions that we have. We have the twenty classes, instruction classes rather, twenty instruction classes that we have. We have the M O V, we have the A D D, we have S U B, we have C N P, we have A N D, we have or not. We have J E, we have J N E, we have J B, we have J B E, we have J A, we have J A E, we have J N E, we have J B. We have I R E T. We have alts, we have get instruction, we have the put instruction. So these are the twenty basic instructions that we have. But now from these twenty now, we now have, we are now going to talk about ten of them. Ten of them are taken out from this twenty. And that's why we have the classes of basic instruction, which are data movement instruction, arithmetic and logic instructions. We have the I N C instruction, we have the D E C instruction, we have the add and sup- add and sub instruction. We have the M U L or I M U L instruction, logical instructions, program counter instructions. Then we have the special instructions. Now, let me take them one by one. Now to the data movement instruction. An example of that data movement instruction is that M O V A S comma B X. And we have been using as our, our example since the beginning of this course. So data movement instruction now. The data movement instruction that used to move data from one location to another location. That is the function of the data movement instruction. Use them for moving data from one location to another location. The location can be registers, it can be the memory or inside peripheral devices. Can be moved, that, that move data from a particular source to a particular destination. And the source can be from register and the destination can be the memory. So that means you can move data from register to memory or from memory to regi- back to register. So the basic thing is that data movement instruction are used to move data from one location to another. An example there is still that's M O V A S comma B X. A X there is the destination, B X is the source. And that's why I said it the other time, that you are moving, what that instruction is saying is that you are moving the content of B X into A X. So that's why we say B X is the source, why A X is the destination. So that is for data movement instruction. Now the arithmetic and logic instruction. You can come across A L, A L U. What that A L is means arithmetic and logic instructions. And this is addition, subtraction, multiplication, division. And you notice, if you've been following me, you noticed that when I was mentioning the broad class. I mentioned the add, the subtraction, the multiplication. I mentioned those ones. I mentioned add, S U B. So this is now coming together to form the arithmetic and logic instructions. And under this, we have addition, subtraction, multiplication, division. Then the logic pass now at the logical and, logical or, logical X or. Did you get that? So that's arithmetic and logic instructions are made up of all this. We can have an example, you can have A D D B X comma one three three four. Like we have in our course material. A D D B X comma one three three four. What that means is that you are adding the value of the first up run to the second up run. That means you are adding the value of one three three four to B X. Then you can also have another example. If you have A D D, then you have B X comma one, a, 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 a number now. Come, B X comma, let's use two thousand for instance. And you now put two thousand in square brackets. Are you getting me? Let me come again. When you have A D D B X comma two thousand. So the two thousand is now put in square brackets. When you have something like that, it means that you, you, this means add the data placed at address two thousand. The data that you place at address two thousand, you could add it to that B X. That is what that means. Did you get that? Like you have, in the first example, I say you have add B X comma one three three four. What that means is that you are adding the value of one three three four to B X. But now the second example, when you have add B X comma two thousand. And that two thousand is now, you now have, you now have a square bracket enclosing that two thousand. That is different from the first one. What that one means is that, you, it means that you add the data placed at that address, address two thousand. The data that is placed there, you add it to B X. That is what that means. So that is an example of arithmetic instruction. We can have logic instruction also, logical or, logical and. Then you can also have logical X or, know you, you done that, something like this in your fourth semester. That is arithmetic and logic instruction. Then now let's go to I N C instruction. What does that mean? That this is used for incrementing an up run by one. I N C means it's short form for increments. So it means incrementing an up run by one. That is what I N C means. Incrementing an up run by one. Then when you have D E C, D E C instruction is used for decrementing an up run by one. You are using it to decrease, to decrease. D E C is from the word decrease. So it means decrementing an up run by one. The other one, I N C, it means incrementing, you are increasing an up run by one. D E C means you are decreasing an up run by one. Then if you have add and sub instruction. Add and sub instruction is for performing addition and subtraction of binary data. Addition and subtraction of binary data, we know binary zeros and ones. So that is what add and sub instruction is. Then forget, arithmetic instruction can be add, addition, subtraction, multiplication, division. But for add and sub, add and sub is simple addition and subtraction of binary data. Then we can have M U L or I M U L instruction. That M U L is for multiplying binary, this is for multiplying binary data. For multiplying binary from the word multiplication. So M U L instruction, it will handle unsigned data. When you have M U L, M U L instruction handles unsigned data. What do we mean by unsigned data? When we say unsigned data, what does that mean? Unsigned data are variable that can hold only zero and positive numbers. That is what we mean by unsigned data. They are the variable type that can hold just zero and positive numbers. They are the unsigned data. Then I M U L, I M U L instruction can undo signed data. This will undo signed data. And what this signed data means is that they are variable that can hold both positive and negative numbers. They are, they are hold both positive and negative numbers. That is the I M U, I M U L instruction. Then now let's go to the D I V and I D V instruction. This will generate two elements. You have the quotient and the remainder, and the remainder. You have the quotient and the remainder. It's from the word divisor, dividing. And it will generate two elements. Generate the quotient and the remainder. The quotient and the remainder from the modulus I explained earlier on. Think you should be able to understand what we mean by quotient and what we mean by remainder. So then we have the logical instructions. The logical instructions, they are the instructions like and, or, X or, not. So these are the logic instructions. Then we move on to program counter instructions. The program counter instructions are that instructions that control the program execution. It controls the program execution. Then we have the special instructions. The special instruction works like special instructions. They work like special instructions which allow changing specific processor behavior. These allow changing specific processor behavior. Like an example of the special instructor, instructions is C L I. When you see C L I, C L I means clear the interrupt flag. Clear the interrupt flag. Then we can have S T I. S T I means set. This means it will SCI means set. This means it will restore to normal behavior. And that's why we said the special instructions work like special instructors. Which allow changing specific process, processor behavior. So these are the basic instructions that we have. We have the data movement instruction, arithmetic and logic instructions, INC instruction, DEC instruction. Add and sub instruction, MUL or IMUL instruction, DIV, IDV instruction, logical instructions. Program counter instruction. Then we have the special instructions. We are going to be stopping here. In our next class, we move on to talk about branching and looping. So we've been able to talk about the uprants and instruction uprants, then the basic instruction. So in our next class, we'll be talking about the branching and the looping. Thank you for listening.